I think so.
You and Hall been holding up the whole thing.
Judge over here, yeah. I told Ken, what did Ken tell you? You gonna start his problem? Yeah, I said, look, nobody asked to use this courtroom. I asked Judge, I asked him if I can use it, so don't be coming in here unless they're gonna coincide with us to do it.
You know what? I feel for you, 'cause you've been hanging around me too long.
I don't care. We always get together, go into the total hole, guys.
Been hanging around me too long.
All right, are y'all ready since we're, I know y'all got lots of to do today. They rough, they rough.
See, when what you call that?
Yeah.
All right, good morning to everybody. It's nine oh five. We're running just five minutes late. I think everybody knows why. All right. We're here today on DeSousa County Commissioners Court Special Call Meeting, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five, nine a.m. We do not have any public comment. I think that one of the grand jurors may have signed in on this accidentally, but we don't have any public comment. So we will move to the consent agenda.
Does anybody have any questions but out of one?
No, sir. Good.
Everybody still okay? Right?
Yeah, I don't see. Two, the trailer and everything, don't have anything on that?
I'm all right.
Good.
Everybody's good. I'm doing this here to present the agenda as listed.
Motion in a second to accept the consent agenda as listed. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? If everybody sign up, leave right there. All right, deliberate and consider action on the following items. Number four canvassed, the November fourth, twenty twenty five constitutional amendment election. Anything, Glenn?
In the next page, you have signed, Judge, by itself.
There it is.
Question I had, I was just like on precinct five, there was like a hundred and forty votes cast for the constitutional amendment, but then like the school proposition, A or whatever it was, it was only like twenty eight. Was that a school district boundary deal or?
Yes, and they only, they only did it after that vote. Only after people voted and then they could have left it, or could have left it playing, but then that made people, that district could have voted and then.
So like of the hundred and forty two that voted for that, only, there's only.
Yes, only twenty eight of them, and those were captured.
But was that on that entire ballot, everybody in that particular precinct, that was on their ballot, correct, or?
It's just that those cast, it's only twenty six who were just in that precinct alone, just at the same time.
But I don't, like, say your school district, you know, they go across county lines and different things like that.
I don't have theirs.
Right.
I only have, that's my recent five alone, so, this recent four, but that district is gonna make a difference very good.
If the school district went into like Guadalupe County or something, how do those get accounted for?
They can go vote over there, 'cause it's a county-wide election.
But I'm saying, so the people, right, Guadalupe County, if they were in the school district and voted for it.
They're still on their ballot, for being one of them.
And then it gets counted in, into this?
No, this is only for our.
Where do we see those, or how do those?
In Guadalupe County. I don't have theirs.
'Cause it's just for the gap, the votes that were cast, but they've been lost, can't.
Yes.
But there should be a way that you can go statewide and see what.
From Guadalupe County, it's fine, you see theirs.
Anybody else have any questions?
Sure.
Anybody see that?
On move, we, I have number four canvassed, November fourth, twenty twenty five constitutional amendment election. We approve the official results as per what we presented.
Motion in a second to canvass the November fourth constitutional amendment election and approve the results as submitted. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. So the next one on here is five discussed with actually Bedco scaffolds quote from the Randall Rather building. We had had that, we briefly discussed some of that the other day. I was, I took off too much on that, but the actual deal to build the tunnel would be eighty-three, twenty-five, twenty, if we go and get the material. Do everybody have that? Yeah, so we would take off and delivery charges unless they can't charge us the sales tax if one of us go and get it, but then, we erected or they gonna erect it? I mean, that's the next question, and then the big question is, is we're trying to look over the, the. Yeah, the proposed contract, 'cause we were trying to figure out, I think, what they cost, what it costs to install it and then to dismantle it. What, I looked at it a little bit this morning.
Based on how I read it, this is the price to erect it and dismantle it.
That's the way I read it too, but.
The, there is one section in here that talks about there's additional associated cost for removing the scaffolding, but that's just if there's a tropical depression or earthquake that they have to prepare for, so that would be additional there.
Right, so I was under the assumption that it was like twenty thousand to erect it and twenty thousand to dismantle, but reading that, I. Well, yes, we already did, we already paid it on that one side, but then I don't know, so I had given to Kristen this morning to kind of look over it, and she tends to agree with me that on the deal, it says on the terms and conditions. That the Bedco scaffold labor pricing is bid on a single erection and single dismantle with free and clear access to the site where it is, so.
So that twenty thousand covered the moment.
That's what it's saying until we find out anything further.
I mean, if you look on the first page under the scope, it does say as well for the erection and dismantle.
Where did we get anything different? Was that from Ryan's top?
Brian, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what they had said. They thought it was gonna charge us to do it.
Yeah, usually it's one feet up front.
That's kind of what I thought. I mean, it's a lot of money to, I know there's a lot to put it up, but there's still a lot to.
We done paid for its capital.
So does this, it would have been have any direction cost involved in it?
No, but it's that single, single phase, well, single phase, single debt that goes up to cover the deal that's tunnelized, so.
So that we're gonna put it erecting ourselves, is that?
That is possibility.
We're, correction, if I'm wrong, they can say we didn't talk about anything about putting just the wreck.
Right.
And we were gonna, only thing, we were gonna erect it, we were gonna buy our own plywood, or we're definitely going to do it, uh, talking to McNabb and Brian, they felt like we could, well, we all felt we could.
So, right, we, there's no taxes, we can go and get it, so to say that.
Yeah, we, you know, now people will erect it. I think we need to put one of us in charge of it, or two of us in charge of it, where we can start working on it, go and get it, put, get it assembled, you know, kind of have all our stuff together, so when they take it down, we'll be going right back up.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, especially on the entrance, we make a block off the other part, but if we can get that middle, I don't know if you can put that middle section up first, where when people walk in, that would be the most detrimental for the same thing that falls. I was looking the other day, I really don't see much that is actually falling, but I don't know.
We just need to be on board when all the stuff is walking around, figuring out what we're gonna do, we need to know what we're gonna do when they take it down. And we have, we talked about timeline on dismantling and directing, make sure there's nothing else going on, special at the tax office, county clerk's office, or, or any other, anything going else going on in the building, do you work around? And we might talk to the tax office to make sure that we do do it, not.
Close the screen.
Do it when there's a lot.
And I don't know how close it is to the power lines or anything that's there, that's something else that we need to consider, that if it's close to it, then if they kill that power, then all the time to direct it, so. I know you know more about that power stuff than I.
I know they moved it, when they put that scaffold up, they moved it open and they tried to probably disconnect it.
Yeah, that's one thing that we need to make sure it's done, so that we don't get.
I believe, I believe that all it does is feed the square anyway, so.
Can you do that?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and then if we, if we do have to, we want to close the building down, but under the clock there, there's an entrance that's there, if we were to have to block off the whole front for people that would use it, would have to go in that way, so they wouldn't be. would have to go in that way so they wouldn't be in front of the building. That's a thought, so right.
Under the cover portion.
Under the cover portion by entering on Dudley Hospital side, under the clock.
Do we need to bring our signs in the door up? Our, you know, signs that light up in case it's going to be closed or permitting stream or anything? We think just barricade the work.
I think probably we barricade it off where the kid can get through there. That would probably be best.
Because it'll have to be a transition. They may, they're tearing down if we were going to buy it.
Yeah, there's going to be, there's going to be probably a couple of days in between there where we won't be able to use the front of that building. We'll have to use that side entrance.
Probably get asked how long it's going to take to then take that down. The front wouldn't take that long.
Yeah. And it's going up with a single deal. It's kind of screw that stuff together.
Have the plywood ready to put on top of the door.
Yeah. And I think they said two sheets of three quarter inch plywood. At least the top of probably by wall and that's going to mess up. Might use that plywood at different times.
Or coated with Thompson.
Who's going to, how big a truck is that taking hold of?
I imagine it's going to be a flat bed.
A hauler.
You got a truck to haul it, don't you?
Yeah, a 54 foot hauler. With the hauler all the way right in. Tells when we need to go. We can, we can leave it on there till we need it. It would be good if we go ahead and get the stuff before they took it down. We're to get it down sooner or whatever. We can at least put up that one part.
Yeah.
If we got it and set on track, we want to wait on them now. We'll be ready.
Have some blocks.
We need to get the plywood and everything. Have everything. Oh, you're right. He said we're going to have to have some blocks. Remember that, Roy?
Right, right. Exactly. That's what I said. Two to six or whatever.
So I'm blue if we can go after. We should give a hauler all this form of time on the third.
Yeah, I'll go with the eight three. 25, 20?
Yes.
I'm going to want to get point contact on that.
Right, but since, right, but you and Roy's is royal electrical side for sure. And then you're young. And then if we need help from the other guys and shit.
That way I'll.
Yeah, maybe whatever meaning you need or whatever we need to do.
So who's going to contact these people again, seeing when we're going to?
We will.
Y'all will talk back from okay. And then you let us know when we need to go get it and where.
Yeah, I'll get Liz or Amy to send out an email to all y'all and let y'all know what's going on.
Tell us how things are going. I hope we approve the quote for Bedco's capital. What is that? Donnie and Roy need to come on contact on picking it up and restoring.
Motion in a second to go with the Bedco scaffolding on putting Commissioner Przygostski in Commissioner's statement. As the point of contacts. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Most curious, Commissioner's statement.
Make the motion be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Perfect.